Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy, I didn't see you. Good evening, everyone. Could you please stand for the patch? Effect of September 1st, 1991. Chapter 9 of the Laws of 1991 requires that we inform persons other than students who attend meetings within a school of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, there are four exits that may be used. Exit one is on the west. Go out the door and walk onto the field away from the building. Exit two is to the south. Walk through the door, across the parking lot, to the field and away from the building. Exit three is to the east. Go out the doors, turn right, then left. Exit the building and walk to the south field. There's a quiz at the end of this. Exit four, go through the door, turn left, and go out the rear. Doors of the cafeteria. If these doors are locked, turn right, go down the hall, and use the exit doors on your left. Proceed to Jackson Street. I'd like to compliment Ms. May and the medical custodial staff on the excellent condition of the building. I'd also like to thank the medical PTA for the refreshments provided for executive session. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on January 27th, February 3rd, February 10th, and February 24th, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? It's my understanding that there have been some corrections sent to the district clerk?
Yes.
So they were made. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report. The Board of Education acknowledges the receipt of the treasurer's report for December 2015, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. Tereska. Are there any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. So it's been a banner few weeks for Baldwin. We have a lot of really good news. The top 10 students for the class of 2016 were announced. Number 10 is Monique Joseph. Number nine, Peter Orselli. Number eight, Lauren Johnson. Number seven, Amelia Smith. Number six, Safir Baljadeen. Number five, Bridget Jones. Number four, Jackson Randolph. Number three, Catherine Sweeney. Number two, David Zuckerman, who is the salutatorian. And number one, Kahane Yakil, who is our valedictorian. So congratulations to Baldwin's top 10. We also congratulate our valedictorian, Kahane Yakil, who tied for first place in the Nassau County Interscholastic Math League competition, which is really, really impressive when you saw the kids who participated. So congratulations to him. The Baldwin High School Law and Government Academy Mock Trial Team, first time that there is a mock trial team, advanced to Level 2 of the regional competition in the New York State Mock Trial Tournament on March 2nd. They lost in a very close match to last year's county winners, whose advisors praised the Baldwin team on their first year of competition. If you've not ever done that or seen that, it is an amazing experience, but the fact that having never done it before, getting to that level, is really kudos to our coach and our kids. This Saturday, the 12th, March 12th, Baldwin High School Wind Symphony and Band Teachers, Scott Dunn and Kimberly Ruth, have been invited to the College Band Director's National Association Eastern Division Conference. Mr. Dunn and Ms. Ruth will host a clinic on commissioning work for high school bands, while the Wind Symphony will perform three of their commissions and be adjudicated and directed by university band directors. The students will also meet and mingle with Hartford Youth Wind Ensemble. Baldwin High School Symphony Band and Wind Symphony, under Mr. Dunn and Ms. Ruth's direction, have been performing commissioned works created by leading conductors for the past 10 years. So we have some good sports news. Our girls' basketball team are the Nassau County Champions, so we congratulate them. They played beautifully. It was a hard-fought effort, and they really did spectacular. There's no easy feat to get to become the Nassau County Championships. And our boys, not only were the Nassau County Championships, but this past weekend, they also became the Long Island Champions in an amazing game. The last five minutes were just, oh my God, yes. So they moved to the semifinals this Saturday at Glens Falls Civic Center, and if they win the semifinals on Sunday, they will play for the New York State Championships. If you're interested, you can follow, oh, I'm sorry. Friday, we will be giving them a send-off on Friday morning. Students and staff will rally around the team as they board the bus, and they will be escorted by the Baldwin Fire Department with horns and lights down Grand Avenue. You can follow the updates on Twitter. The handle is @Baldwin__Brunes, and listen to the game live on radio at wallradio.com. You can also listen on your smartphones and tablets with a free app called TuneIn and search 1340WALL, W-A-L-L. It'll have an orange and blue logo with the call letters WALL. One of the other things we're inviting people to do is to line Grand Avenue and cheer our team on as they leave the high school and travel north to the southern state. Last few things, we had an 11th grader. We have a brand-new course this year, SUPA, Syracuse University Project Advanced Public Affairs Course, and our 11th grader, Giselle Pintata, was chosen to attend this year's Students Inside Albany Program, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. They have firsthand experience and learn about New York State government in a long weekend in May. Jessica Vincello competed in the National Shakespeare Competition. This is also brand-new to our high school. She moved into the second round in New York City. Did not go beyond that, but there's some rumors around it might have been a little fixed. At this point, you probably already know, our high school principal, Mrs. Norris, is retiring, so I did not get an opportunity the last time we met. I know Mrs. Reed did, but I felt that I needed to just publicly thank her for all of her years of service, and will during our retirement breakfast. But I personally have had a phenomenal experience with Mrs. Norris. I think she's an outstanding educator and administrator, and personally, I'm sad to see her retire. And lastly, I will share with you that last week, my Superintendent's Advisory Council, which is a group of high school students that I meet with on a monthly basis, I met with them two months ago, and they had a lot to say about the work on Grand Avenue and the revitalization of Grand Avenue. And I decided I was the wrong audience, because I wasn't going to be able to do anything to help them with that. And so I invited Nassau County Legislature Laura Curran. She brought David Vienna, who works with her, members of the Civic Association and the Chamber of Commerce, to attend a meeting, my next council meeting with them. It was a brilliant conversation. Our kids are not shy. They are not short of ideas or suggestions. They were thoughtful, and they really, really, really were just amazing ambassadors for Baldwin. And it was so good that I know the conversation continues with the Civic Association and will continue with the Chamber, because I've received emails from both the students and the organizations with suggestions of how we might move forward. So you would be very proud Baldwin residents if you had seen and heard the conversation between our 11th and 12th graders and our community leaders. So kudos to everyone for that. Next, we're just going to move. Ms. Farigno is here with her Science Articulation Team, and we are going to hear about science in our district, K to 12. So thank you, Sue.
Good evening, everyone. For our science articulation, our last science articulation presentation was completed during the 2011-2012 school year. Since that time, there has been ongoing process review and curriculum review. Goals for the program. Our committee members consisted of Bernice Teresa Acevedo, myself, Elizabeth Gambitsky, Teresa Quijas, Thomas Livingston, Eva Mastrotono, Dr. Cynthia Seniuk, and Christina Sedaka. The articulation process affirms that we are appropriately aligned with all the expectations identified in the New York State Core Curriculum Guides and the New York State Learning Standards for Science. A review of assessment results on the secondary level, including the examination of gap reports and RAP analysis, further affirms that we are appropriately aligned to our relevant standards. Our students perform very well on all science New York State Regents examinations and advanced placement assessments. A longitudinal review of the gap reports and RAP reports does not identify any significant patterns that would point to misalignments or deficiencies in our curriculum. Special notation is our physics results. Since we've had our last articulation in 2012, our passing rate for the physics regions has gone from 66% to 89% last year. Our science courses are aligned to the New York State Core Curriculum Guides and the New York State Learning Standards for each particular course. The advanced placement courses are aligned to the descriptions and sample syllabi provided by the College Board. Faculty have participated in curriculum writing projects to ensure our local curriculum is aligned to our standards for each course. There has been articulation between the secondary and elementary school level with Bernice Teresa Acevedo, who could not be here with us tonight, so she asked me to share some information on the elementary level. The K-5 Science Program is based upon the New York State Science Standards and Content Understandings. Through a hands-on approach to learning, the Elementary Science Program emphasizes students' understanding of important relationships, processes, mechanisms, and application of concepts. Students' development of inquiry skills, including classifying, creating models, formulating hypotheses, generalizing, identifying variables, recording and interpreting data, making decisions, manipulating materials, measuring, observing, and predicting. As students' skills are developed through the grades, emphasis continues to be placed on positive attitudes and the appreciation of science as a part of lifelong learning. Students learn various topics in life science, earth science, and physical science with the support of Scott Forsman Diamond Edition Science Program, which aids to integrate science content with literacy and mathematics skills. Additional content areas are taught using Bosie's Elementary Science Program kits. New for this year are enrichment activities with professional developers. There have been several pilot experiences. Students conducting studies on trees, including examining crosscuts of tree limbs. As part of a study of water, some students have aquariums in their classroom. A study of soil includes looking at soil samples and observing ant farms. Some students studied ecosystems by examining terrariums. Other activities included working with remote-controlled cars and studying rocks and even rehabilitating a turtle. Trips ranging from something as simple as walking the school grounds to find and adopt a tree to study, or going to a marine nature study center to study the effects of tides, are designed to provide students with additional authentic learning experiences. All of this is completely integrated with literacy skills. Students are keeping science journals to record observations and identify hypotheses. They are sharing their findings in expository writing experiences, including writing all-about and how-to books. Now presenting for our middle school program is Mr. Thomas Livingston.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Farigno. The Science Program in Baldwin Middle School meets the goals of both New York State and the Baldwin School District. In grade 6, students study physical science, which is comprised of chemistry and physics topics. In 7th grade, students study life science and have the opportunity to take an honors version that is enriched and in more depth. In 8th grade, students take either a general earth science course or an honors earth science Regents course. The general earth science course ends with the New York State Intermediate Science Assessment. This assessment covers information learning grades 5 to 8. The honors earth science Regents course provides students with the opportunity to earn high school Regents credit and ends with the earth science Regents exam. In all three grades, the curriculum is aligned with the New York State Science Standards and Core Curriculum Guides. Assessments given throughout the year are aligned with the New York State Intermediate Level Science Exam and the Regents Exams. Students read notification materials related to their topics of study as well. They answer comprehension questions based on the reading. They also write written responses to extended response questions, essays on related science topics, and lab analysis. Hands-on activities are also a part of the curriculum in the middle school. Students participate in hands-on lab activities. Some of these activities are inquiry-based, with students driving the investigation. Students in honors earth science course have a lab period built into their schedule to meet the 1,200-minute state lab requirement as well. And last but not least, we have the Science Symposium. Honored students have the opportunity to work individually or in a group to design and perform an experiment or investigation. They analyze their results and create exhibit boards or presentations for their project. Their projects are on display as they present them at the Science Symposium night. Presenting the information for the high school is Ms. Christina Sedaka and Ms. Eva Mastrotono.
Thank you. Good evening. The 912 program in science fulfills New York State requirements that students are required to take and pass a Regents exam in order to graduate, and two Regents exams in order to receive a diploma with advanced designation. All Regents courses prepare students to take these examinations. Students are able to fulfill the third year of science throughout additional Regents courses, non-Regent science courses, or science electives. The program offers advanced placement courses for biology, chemistry, environmental, AP-1 physics, AP-2 physics, and APC physics. Electives are offered in marine bio and forensic science. Additional electives are offered through academies. In all three levels, the curriculum is aligned with the New York State Science Standards and Core Curriculum Guides. Assessments given throughout the year are aligned with Regents exams. Common quarterly exams, midterms, and finals are given for each course. All core courses and electives in science involve students in hands-on laboratory experiences. Students are encouraged to think critically and utilize problem-solving skills. They are involved in designing and carrying out experiments for inquiry-based activities. They analyze data to form conclusions and make inferences. The Science Department offers the following electives to students in the Medical Academy: Allied Health 1 and 2, Medical Technology, EMT, Anatomy and Physiology, and Radiology. In the STEM Engineering Academy, students take the elective Design Discovery 1 and 2 through science. These classes are offered to our academy students beginning in grade 9 and ending in grade 12. Students choosing to participate in Science Olympiad choose events that they are interested in. Students collaborate and perform independent research based on the event and topic they have chosen. Students then compete against students from other school districts each year. Some topics include astronomy, anatomy, forensic science, bridge-building, optics, and optics. This year, we placed first in optics. Thank you.
The committee has worked hard over the past four years to implement all the recommendations set forth in the last report. At all levels, they have integrated science content with math, reading, and writing skills that are aligned with the common core state standards. In the middle schools, some of the projects created for the Science Symposium involve students investigating claims and using evidence to either support or disprove the claim. On the secondary level, teachers review data from state assessments, quarterly exams, midterms, and final exams through annual grade-level meetings. Based on the analysis of the data, they make suggestions to adjust teaching in the curriculum in order to improve our results. Teachers also review their individual data to identify areas in need and make adjustments accordingly. All science teachers at the secondary level have received professional development on the Global Harmonizing System for Chemicals. This training included how to read the new systems for chemical labels and the safety data sheets that go accordingly with them. Secondary teachers have also received professional development to incorporate strategies to assist our E&amp;L population. Professional development for utilizing the Flipped Classroom Strategy was also provided. Flipped classrooms allow students to view an instructional video at home with guided questions. In the classroom, they discuss what they have learned and can spend more time on hands-on activities to increase their understanding of the topic. On the elementary level, teachers have received training from professional developer Ms. Nomi Rosen on reinvigorating creativity and innovation for science. This has led to a year-long in-depth studies for each grade level in the elementary level classes. Lastly, there has been an expansion to the Science Academy Program. For the Medical Academy, there is a new radiology course that was implemented this year. Next year, we will be increasing the anatomy and physiology class from a half-year course to a full-year course with a lab period. A new research pre-academy elective was added to the 8th grade. Students in this course are learning research skills that will assist them in high school-level courses and electives. Through our articulation and collaboration, our recommendations for moving forward are the following: to continue to provide professional development opportunities to teachers that will focus on instructional strategies to support the new New York State Science Learning Standards; to continue to explore additional opportunities for students to receive college credit for science electives; we recently have been able to establish a partnership with Malloy College that will allow some of our marine biology elective students to receive college credit starting next school year; provide opportunities to support families in the encouragement of their child science experiences, for example, having parent science workshops. Some questions that we will be considering in the future are: once approved, how will the new New York State Science Learning Standards affect the existing curriculum, the science Regents examinations, and the K-8 assessments? How can we expand upon our pre-academy offerings as we prepare students for high school-level academy courses and college and career readiness? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. I better get that voice ready. Thank you, guys, for your presentation. I would like to entertain any questions from the board. Mrs. O'Hagan? Sure. Please use the mic.
Going back to the part on elementary science, is there a time requirement? Is there a certain amount of time, let's say, each week or periods? Is it strictly based on learning the material, or is it based on a time? Are there supposed to be devoted a certain amount of time to it? I realize with integrated lessons, it's hard to maybe pull that out, but...
There's no mandated time at the elementary level. So what a lot of elementary schools do, as we do here, is infuse the science instruction through literacy, the use of nonfiction in the classroom, and that way, through your literacy blocks of time of instruction, you're able to infuse the science curriculum. Obviously, when you get to the 4th grade, there's more of an emphasis based on the science assessment by New York State, but that's basically the model. And what we're moving towards, obviously, as you saw this year, was more hands-on, inquiry-based science instruction, and then infusing that piece into the writing and reading.
Thank you. And I just have one other question.
And the new standards.
At the very beginning of the presentation, you spoke about a percentage, I'm going to have to refresh my memory, a percentage increase in...
Physics.
In physics, in the performance on physics exams?
That was on the Regents exam.
I see. And what do you attribute that to? Is it...
We do meet every year. The teachers meet collaboratively in grade-level groups to go over the data to see where we can make improvements. The other piece is, out of the five physics teachers, three of them are also math-certified, so they're teaching the math that goes along with the physics in order to be successful on the physics regions. And one teacher is currently looking to get math-certified.
It was an impressive improvement. That's why I'm asking you questions, really. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I'd also like to add, with the gap in the RAP reports, what we're doing is actually drilling down to individual teachers, their students, their classes, and that kind of data really moves us forward when we're adapting our instruction to address those gaps.
Mrs. Tereska, do you have any questions for the team? Mr. Press?
Yeah. So I'm just looking at, these numbers went on that, on your presentation, but they were in prior presentations that we had. So science at the grade 4 level, we had an impressive 96% rate of kids getting threes and fours, and then somehow the science 8 exam, it dropped. Was there a change in curriculum, or...
No, we used to have very good numbers in the 90%. Last year, we had an extreme-high opt-out rate.
Okay.
And we used to also test our 7H students with the 8th-grade state assessment, which caused them, instead of getting an enriched curriculum, they were getting an accelerated curriculum, learning both 7th and 8th grade science in one year. We've changed that a couple years ago, so that they are now getting a full enriched in-depth study of life science. They no longer take that 8th-grade assessment, so we're taking our top students and not testing them for that test any longer.
8th grade. I'd also like to add that 76%, I believe it was for last year, that was within 1% of the Nassau County Science Grade 8 Assessment Average. And that is attributed to the same fact that other districts had those opt-outs, just like we did, and many of the top students do participate in the Regents exam as opposed to the grade 8 assessment.
Got you. And then the other question I had was the AP Physics 1?
AP Physics 1 last year was the first year that that course was given. In the past, it was AP-B Physics. It was a complete overhaul in the curriculum and a completely different exam.
Okay.
And they also did not have any review books or materials out ahead of time for that exam.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Press, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Mrs. Ribori, any questions?
And I don't have any for you tonight either. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move to comments and reports from the Board of Education. I'll start to my right with Mr. Reska. Do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Moving on. Trying to remember. I mean, I think we spoke about a lot of the events that we all attended. Again, the girls' basketball team and the boys' basketball team attended that, and it was just great to see the Baldwin spirit, and, you know, I'm sure we'll continue that as we send our boys' basketball team off. We also, I know, attended a lot of the Founder's Day events from the various PTAs, and thank you to all those for the invitation. That's been great. And the Spring Concerts are coming up, so I know we'll be doing that. And there's an event at Brookside versus Lennox. We have a Family Feud event tomorrow, so those who would like to come out and share that spirit, Brookside versus Lennox Family Feud Game Show Night, feel free to attend and see how that goes. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reska. Mrs. O'Hagan? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just do this. I'm going to go this way. Mr. Preska? Yeah, just changing up a little bit.
All right. I was also at the boys' basketball game, the final. That was, that was an incredible game. It reminded me of the girls' game last year, where they came back from so far behind. The boys were up, and then they went down, and then they came back. It was just incredible. So that was great. Unfortunately, I missed the girls' game that day. I was at Sports Night. Again, that was just incredible. The amount of work that goes into that is just tremendous. And I've spoken to the kids who participate and the parents of the kids who participate. And I've spoken to the kids who participate and the parents of the kids who participate, and it's just a massive undertaking, and they pull it off so incredibly well. So yesterday, last night, we were at the Steel Concert, the three-through-five concert. That was great. The kids did a really good job. It was my first Steel Concert, so I hadn't seen that before them performing. It's interesting seeing the distinction between the different schools of different size. The Steel is a little smaller school, so they do things a little differently, but it was I was at Lennox Founder's Day and Plaza Founder's Day. Those are always great. I love seeing people who get the lifetime honorary life awards for all the work that they really do put in to these schools to make the kids' education and their experience so great. And then the last thing, I was right here at the Meadow Park Pajama Party, not in pajamas, thankfully. I was here reading to the fourth and fifth graders, and that was a really great event. It was so incredibly well-attended, and I think all the kids had a good time, and I think my book was the best. That was it.
I'm gonna allow Mrs. Dereska to come back.
I'm sorry.
She always does this.
I know, I know. I actually attended the Black History Month event here at Meadow. That's what I wanted to say. And it was phenomenal. Was this the first year that they did this event? It was excellent. Myself and Mrs. O'Hagan went to that, and we actually, I actually got to speak to the children, and they really know a lot of great information. I was learning a lot that I didn't know, so it was a great event. Hopefully, you guys do it next year. I'll definitely be there. Yes. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think, you know, I can't really say much of anything different. I mean, I've been to all the same of the events. No, I was just gonna say, I've been at all the events that my colleagues have been at. I was at Steel Schools concert. I actually just had a bed made for me and just spent the night and was at the Steel. I went to Steel's concert this morning. Both concerts were very well-done. The kids are amazing. And I just want to say publicly, I want to say thank you to the teachers and staff members who I saw at the games. You don't have to be there, and it means a lot to the kids in the community when we have people from the staff, central administration, teachers out there supporting our kids, so I really appreciate that. So I wanted to say a public thank you for that. I don't really think I have anything else to share, so I'm gonna send it down to Mrs. Robori? No? Mrs. O'Hagan? Oh, wait, I do have one thing, I guess. Yeah. Well, no, but I guess I'm gonna kind of come back to something that I think I need to put out here. I don't know if you guys know that on April 19th, we're having our New York State primary. We're also having a special election for the vacay-to-seat for Senate District Number Nine. And as a board member, we can't tell you how to vote, but we can tell you that this election is very important for education. So I believe that the BCA is in the process of trying to set up a candidate's forum. They're looking to try to do it on their April 14th meeting if everything goes well. Keep your ears to the ground for that. Get educated and come out and vote. And I think I'm gonna go ahead and send it down to Mrs. O'Hagan now.
Repeating what everyone else is saying, it could be all a lot of the same event, I did want to just say that I was at one of the boys' final games. The boys played, and it was so nerve-wracking. I didn't see the girls' final game, though. One of the boys' games, and it looked as if the boys were just playing a totally different game. The difference in the professionalism and intensity of play was so dramatic. It looked like the other team, the other team, the one that was being, and needed it, was incredible. It was an amazing demonstration of teamwork and appeal. I was absolutely blown away. I was in the water. Sports night fabulous, and this year, over 200 girls participated. I'm sorry, there was one that participated for the boys. But it was, I just tallied up on the back page of the program. The thing that I would like to emphasize is the number of students that participated in the program. When a program draws that many kids, you have to say, "This is a good thing." And the back of the program was the advisory board for each team. So there were upwards of 30 participants on each team. You've had an opportunity for a leadership role, which I think is probably one of the best things that we can say about the program. So having opportunities giving teams for leadership and leadership development. That said, just a couple things that I was glad that hadn't been mentioned. One is that Mrs. Reed and I were at the PTA legislative roundtable that was run by Nassau Region, and it was a really good day. They get their turnout of legislators. It was a lot of the legislative stations themselves that the... What the opportunity for questions that the fourth year they were given, I'm just guessing by my comments, I got. And then this morning, I was, I co-shared the one on the education conversation, and we met this morning, and our guest was Roger Bellis, who is a romantic student. And in light of the fact that there have been three U members, twenty-two region, including the last day, it was a very nice opportunity to have this place on what that's going to mean going forward, how it will impact some of the regulations, and what this year was about, particularly, what the social is going down, as you probably know, and the person who likes to be placed as a very different style. So that was a great opportunity to see how that played out, because it means a great deal for us in terms of how the world and regulations to guide you through whatever comes your way. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your reports and comments. I just, at this point, I'm going to open the floor for comments from the community. I don't have my script, but I'll try. I should know this by heart by now. This first session is a timed session of 30 minutes, or if we have fewer people at the mic and we need to move on with business, then we will cut the time period short. We cannot discuss, we cannot discuss in public matters that pertain to employees or students. We also ask that when you address the board, you address your questions and comments to me, and if I don't have the answer, I will then deflect or give it to the person. Deflect. I can't remember if it says deflect. I will ask the appropriate person to respond to your question, and if we can't respond, then we will take, we will ask for your name and address, and we'll try to get back to you. Above all else, you know, one of the things that I've tried to do throughout my tenure as the Board President is to establish an environment that is respectful, that we respect the people who are coming to the mic, and we expect that the people at the mic respect us. Meaning, no derogatory comments or inflammatory comments about anyone on the dais, anybody who works in the district, and just keep it respectful. I mean, that's all that we can ask. I mean, we're all here for the betterment of the students and the community, so with no further ado, I think I'll go ahead and open the floor.
Good evening. Tricia Wilder, 655 St. Luke's Place. I just wanted to share with the board and as well as the community the positive experience that I am having as a teacher with the professional development that has been going on this year. There have been two very exceptional professional developers. Lauren Heffernan has been in my classroom several times and has just offered so many great things. I've been a teacher for 18 years in Baldwin, and I think there, you can always learn more. You can always become better. And she's just bringing so much to my classroom, and I do appreciate that. The other one is Noemi Rosen, and it's kind of funny that the science articulation was tonight, because I wanted to let you know that my students had the opportunity to go to the Long Island Science Center yesterday to tap maple trees. And it was an experience that I've never had in my 41 years of life, and I just think it was so wonderful for these five-year-olds to actually walk into the woods, take the drill, actually turn it, and watch as the hole was made in the tree, and watch the sap come out. It was just such an amazing experience. And then they actually were able to go in, learn how it's turned into maple syrup, and actually try it. And what was really exciting for them is that they learned that the syrup that they put on their pancakes is not really maple syrup. It's corn syrup. And they just found that so fascinating. So it's just been such a positive experience for the students, myself, and I was actually at a meeting this afternoon, and another name, Gina Castellato, who's also a professional developer, I don't deal with her, but I heard such wonderful things about her as well, and I just thought that you should know that in the community. You should know that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Kugelmas, 979 Van Buren Street. As judged by New York State's Controller's Office, our school district has a financial stress level of zero. Our top administrator attributed that to good management. Nothing could be farther from the truth. Eight years ago, we educated 500 students, 500 more students for $26 million less dollars. As our costs have risen significantly, our enrollment has decreased significantly. That's why we recently shut down two elementary schools. Our cost is $26,000 per student in a country where the average is $10,000 per student, and a lot of those 10-grand students are enrolled in great universities in California, Texas, Indiana, Illinois, Delaware, and New York. Locally, though, we're cheaper than our profligate Nassau neighbors. Just the public schools, not the private and parochial schools. Not Queens, just Nassau. We're fools, but other Nassau public schools are greater fools. The financial model for this of a school is not good management, but excessive revenue to whitewash poor management. Revenue by shaking down state politicians, revenue by greenmailing caring parents. Baldwin is better off than our neighboring Nassau public schools because we obtain more state funding. One-third of our budget is state money. That's not good management. Three years ago, under no financial stress, no financial stress, our school district threatened kindergarten, sports, music, all extracurricular, to shake down a 7% tax increase from caring parents. They duped parents, the duped parents had to fundraise for musicals, sports, et cetera, while the district stashed an extra $8-million budget surplus in their reserves. Last year was a $10-million budget surplus. The board wanted a four-year, 27% tax increase three years ago. That's not good management. Scannell and Cullen drastically reduced bus service. That did not save us one cent, but ended up costing us millions more than projections. Baldwin has the worst bus service in all of Long Island. That's not good management. Now, legacy contracts that are inflated and costly are not the fault of our top administrators. That's the board's fault, and the board certainly demonstrated continued fiscal indifference and incompetence by increasing our budget another $2.5 million for next year, on top of last year's $10-million budget surplus and on this year's $10-million budget surplus. The board continues to slow-boil the sucker residents and leave future boards and residents with worse problems. Massive budget surpluses continue and increase despite recent direct reprimands from the state comptroller, Thomas Donapoli, to stop padding Baldwin budgets. That's what Donapoli told Dr. Mace. For the life of me, I don't know why our superintendent went out of her way to shill for our fiscally incompetent board. That's Mrs. Schmoll's job. Shills don't need a PhD. And PhDs should know better.
Thank you. Tonight, this is not a response. I'm not looking to get into a dialogue. Just this is for the benefit of the rest of the community, and I speak only for myself and lead my board members, my fellow board members, to share their own opinions, but I want the community to not take my silence on this as being in any sense in agreement with anything that has been said by Mr. Kugelmas tonight or any of the previous nights where he's said the same thing. I just want to be clear that, at least from my perspective, my silence does not indicate an agreement with what you said. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. O'Hagan.
And again, I don't want to get too mad around Twitter. However, I think since we have heard a lot of these statements before, I really need to say that I think we have a very basic philosophical disagreement on the concept of fund-down. We believe that a fund-down is a first way of managing through this budget, to accommodate unexpected expenditures, and generally, employees are not as flexible. And in this, we are not continually deciding this on our, this guidance that is continuing our whole operation, and we have three big priorities to do, give us timely guidance about how we are approaching the budget. So we have this philosophical difference. I know that we need to, but we're repeating this much, therefore, I don't think it's going to change, and it's just mine, and putting up against the needs of our own. And on the other issue, however, I know we have a philosophical disagreement, and that is the feedback we've gathered, and I just want to say, just first of all, I think it's great that our contacts are purposeful, and they work very hard, and we see that contact has what it is needed for the county of Nassau, which is a competitive, and it's a lot of success. We are not out of line with the kind of sense of passion that we're living in our office every year, our health in the county. And I think that the fact that we are on the road spending business in Nassau County in terms of our people's expenditures, there's a great deal about the fact that we are just very thoughtful and just very serious. And I just don't think that having this change back and forth every month is productive. And we will continue to do it, and I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
See, at this time, seeing that there's no one else at the mic, I'm gonna close this session, and we're gonna move on with the business of the board. I'm on Special Services, right? Oh, no. Personnel Action Report. Okay. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Action Report dated March 9, 2016, as detailed in a Friday mailing and as amended. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mr. Press. Again, as this contains names of employees, we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you? Okay. Special Services. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for the services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-SCSC 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in November and December 2015, and January and February 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press? Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. This contains names of students, and we do not discuss this in public as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Report as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press? Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. Contains names of students. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no. It contains names of students, so we will not be discussing this in public either. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Business. The Board of Education approves payment of the Health and Welfare Service Contracts for 2015-16 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing. The school district, I'm gonna read the school district, number of students, amount per pupil, and the total. So my first is Farmingdale Union Free School District, Bethesda School, one, one pupil at a cost of $937.32, for a total of $937.32. Sciocic, CSD, Our Lady of Mercy, three, three students, $886.62 per student, for a total of $2,659.86. Uniondale Union Free School District, Kellenburg Memorial, 105. Saint Martin de Porus, 15 students. Saint Port, Saint Martin de Porus, fifteen students. Pat Cam, one student, for a total of one hundred and twenty-one students, at a cost of five nine, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of seventy-one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight thousand eighty-seven cents. Valley Stream Union Preschool District, one student, one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents, for a total of one thousand one hundred nine seventy, one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents. Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
I was just going to say, the number six in the Uniondale, USC, says five ninety-two forty-seven, but the agenda says five ninety-six forty-seven. So I'm not sure which is the correct one. It should be five ninety-two.
Okay. All right.
Does that change the total?
No, the total.
Is the total correct?
Well, you have the total.
We could calculate it, I guess. Just to make sure that number.
It looks like it's a typo, it should have been a six instead of a two. No, I understand.
Yep, the total is correct.
The total is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the amount per pupil, just for public record, is five, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Thank you, Mr. Reska. And the total, as is stated previously, is correct, for a total of seventy-one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. So, do I have, do we have a motion on the floor? And we had a second, right? Okay, so now that we have everything good, are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves a contract for six students attending a private residential school for the 2015-16 School Year as detailed in the Friday mailing. The name of the school is United Cerable Palsy of Nassau County. Ooh, I say that five times fast. It's six students at a cost of forty-two thousand three hundred and four dollars per student. The total for that is two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are we, are we having questions or corrections on this item? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves a contract with Ms. Adriana Parakiv to provide evaluation and counseling service for 2015-16 School Year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think I heard everybody. Did everybody know? Okay, I'm just, I'll make sure you hear. Nancy, Mary, I'm sorry. All right, item number four. The Board of Education approves the purchase of cyber liability insurance through Arthur J. Gallagher and Company for an annual premium of four, a two million dollar limit, being thirteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars, plus three point seven eight percent tax and fee, to be prorated for eight months, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Yes, Mrs. Dereska?
I have a few questions. The first one is, this is the first time we're getting this type of policy, and can you give me an example of what it covers? Is it like some type of defamation being done online? Like, what is this really affecting? Or is it?
It would actually be if...
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. It would be actually if there was some sort of break-in through the firewall to our system with funds.
Okay, so just essentially the hacking or any breaking?
Yes.
Okay. That's what it covers. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the renewal of the contract with Professional Innovative Programs to provide a computerized voting system for the 2015-16 School Year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
When would this be in place? For this, just for that, that would be the first. Okay.
That's it, we just use them to work the electoral, if I should go.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves an agreement with John A. Grillo, Architect PC, as the district's architect for the 2015-16 School Year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves an agreement with Orley Carl Doran to provide a two-hour workshop on administration, scoring, and interpretation of the Wexler's Individual Achievement Test III as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education declares obsolete and approves the disposition of four chairs in the Office of Assistant Superintendent for Business and Administration, which are broken and unsafe per state rules and regulations as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, second by Mr. Press. Any questions or comments on this item? All righty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education declares obsolete and approves the disposition of a refrigerator in the high school cafeteria, which does not work, per state rules and regulations as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, second by Mr. Press. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, wait, before I say that, are there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I always wanted to do that. I never get to move. Okay, use of facilities. The Board of Education approves, well, I do move, but not move, anyway, okay, sorry. The Board of Education approves the Use of Facilities Report for March 2016 through June of 2016 as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Why, we're just moving along. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.